Meeting of the City Council, the City Crescent City. Roll call, City Clerk.
Please. Councilmember Dooley.
Here.
Councilmember Greenow.
Here.
Mayor Protem Wright.
Here.
Mayor Altman.
Here. Everyone, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready to begin. Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with its own liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. City Attorney Rice, do we have anything to report out of closed session?
We do not have any actions to report this evening.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have no ceremonial items this evening and no reports and presentations. And so I will read the guidelines for public comment period. Any member of the audience is invited to address the City Council on any matter that is within the jurisdiction of the City of Crescent City. Comments of public interest on or on matters appearing on the agenda are accepted. Please note, however, that the council is not able to undertake extended discussion or act on non-agendized item. Such items can be referred to staff for appropriate action, which may include placement on a future agenda. All comments shall be directed toward the entire council. Any comments that are not at the microphone are out of order and will not be part of the public record. After receiving recognition from the mayor, please state your name and city or county residency for the record. Public comment is limited to three minutes. The public is additionally allotted three minutes each in which to speak on any item on the agenda prior to any action taken by the council. At this time, I would like to remind the public that if you do want to see an item considered on a future agenda, that will be discussed at the end of the council meeting under council directives. Okay, moving on to our, do we have any public comment? Okay, we have one public comment.
Roger Getlin, excuse me. Mayor Altman, did I hear you say that any suggestions for future item will be conducted to the end of the meeting? Is that a new?
Yes, under.
Position?
Yeah, under council directives.
Okay, I'll stick around for that. I do have something I'd like to address to you. And the other item that I would like to address is to commend Robin, our city clerk, for entertaining all the loaded work I've given her with regard to the graffiti page. And what a good job she's doing and we're making progress. So we're asking more people to volunteer some of the abatement needs and it's coming down. So Robin, thank you very much for doing that. I have more to give you tomorrow, of course. And just that it's a program that's program beautification. If it sits there day after week, after month, after a year, in some cases, and nothing happens, it becomes part of the landscape of the community, defines the community. So we have this program and called Graffiti Corner and the paper is going to take a strong stand on cleaning up and making this community graffiti free, trash free, graffiti free, so that we can truly take advantage of all the new programs that are coming in and cleaning up our town and put a new face on it. So I'll address at the end of the meeting with regard to the agenda item I'd like to put on the future agenda.
Just to clarify, City Attorney Rice, he can ask for an agenda item now during public comment, at which point during the City Manager Report and Council Directives, the council will either make a consensus or not on to put that on the future agenda.
Okay, do I have a minute to talk about that then?
Yeah.
Okay. Several weeks ago, the harbor adopted an invocation. It's a, in this case, a non-denominational prayer before your government meetings. This was substantiated and supported in April of 2014, when the Supreme Court, in a Supreme Court case, City of Greece, New York versus another party, allowed for denominational and non-denominational prayer. The harbor did, in fact, do that three weeks ago. And I'd like the council to consider similar action. This isn't a religious thing. I want to make it very clear that our Assembly, State Senate, House of Representatives, and the United States Senate also invoke an invocation. And it's a very simple one. It's a matter of a few lines and it invokes the name of God. And in God we trust and give us the courage, the experience, and the wisdom to make decisions which benefit our citizenry. That's about all of it. It may add a few little things that each of the Senate and the House of Representatives and done the assembly have added, but it's very simple and it does not involve anything having to do with religion. It's a very simple prayer. We're all under this umbrella and it helps us and helps us understand what kind of community we have and that we have a greater belief than just you four gentlemen and one person not here sitting and making decisions in a vacuum. So that's what I would like to bring up for discussion by the end of the meeting and if it can be discussed and put on the agenda. And at the harbor, you need the resolution from the harbor in terms of what exactly it says. I'd be happy to make sure you can get that or you can certainly get a hold of that. And it's my goal to have all three of our major governances do this, including the Board of Supervisors, who I will approach next week to ask for similar action. And we should all be on the page. So this is my suggestion, 11 years after the fact that we tried it once and it didn't galvanize, we're in different times now. And some of it is very trying. So that is what I'd like to have discussed at the end of the meeting. So thank you very much.
And sir, that's called an invocation?
Yes, it's an invocation. That's what it's officially called and it's a prayer. And it does not involve religion. I want to make it very clear. It just invokes the word of God in any of your presentations. So the resolution is readily accessible. I could have brought it tonight, but again, I'm, I'm asking you to put it on the future agenda for a discussion on the implementation. And frankly, to eliminate this, I don't want to be too prejudicial when I say this, this moment of silence, which is neither beast nor foul. It says nothing. Many people during this moment of silence are playing on these things right here. So I'm, I'm trying to help the City Council define its mission under with a simple 30-second invocation. And it's done in our state, in our country. It's not precedent setting. If I'm not mistaken, I had this conversation with the City Manager and that it's been done before and over the years, it's just managed to be dropped off the radar. So there is history of doing it here in the City of Crescent City and the Board of Supervisors. And I'm hoping that we can bring it back in a form which doesn't offend or doesn't inflame the public, except perhaps some atheists, but that's another subject altogether. This is a community that we have 50 odd churches in town. This is, this is something that invokes the, the realization that we're not alone and there's, you're being driven not just by your own minds, but by something a little greater than that. So I'd like it, I'd like to see it discussed and hopefully voted upon in a way which embraces that invocation, if you will, non-denominational prayer. Any other questions from?
Yeah, thank you for the clarification. Are there any questions from council?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Is there any further public comment? Not seen any further public comment. We'll move on to the consent calendar. First item is warrant claims list. Second item is council meeting minutes. Third is payroll report. Fourth is budget to actual summary as of December 31st to 2024. Number five is quarterly cast and investments report as of December 31st, 2024. Number six is pro housing initiative program budget. Number seven is the Pebble Beach Drive slight emergency construction, which is ongoing. Number eight is Butte Court Mobile Home Park Water Service Agreement. Number nine is downtown farmer's market location. Number 10 is City of Crescent City Planning Commission Appointment. And number 11 is amendment number one to agreement with SHN for planning and engineering services. Council, would you like to pull any of those items from the consent list or make a motion?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda, the consent calendar.
Second. City Clerk, will you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Dooley.
We need a public comment.
Oh, sorry.
Any public comment on the consent list? Consent calendar, messing everything up. No public comment, Clerk?
Yes, yes, Councilmember Dooley.
Yes.
Councilmember Greenow.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wright.
Yes.
Mayor Altman.
Yes, thank you. Okay, we have no public hearing this evening or continued business. We do have new business. Item 12 is Front Street G to Play Street Improvement Project Contract Notice of Completion.
Thank you.
And we're going to hear staff.
Thank you, Mayor Altman, members of the City Council. This is, uh, this is another exciting day when it comes to the Front Street project. We have Director Jaeger, who deserves a ton of credit, his and his team, for bringing this project to life. It took many funding partners and a lot of, a lot of strategy to get to this point. And so it's with, with excitement and also appreciation for Director Jaeger's work to bring this item. And we have this next phase of Front Street that is now officially complete with council's action. Director Jaeger.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. July of 2023, we showed up out there in Front Street, Front H, with some gold shovels and watched a grinder tear up our road. And then they proceeded to tear up some trees and curbs and a year and a half later, two-phase project, we did three blocks of Front Street's been completed. As Mr. Weir said, you know, the struggles of the project were funding and dynamics of getting through it all, but we did well. I think the public is very happy with the project as, as we are. I want to thank the contractors involved as well. This step here is real briefly, just a matter of putting out the contract notice completion, kind of posting with the agencies so that any folks, we have a 30-day waiting period for the, for the project to be finalized. So that is where we're at today. We've achieved labor compliance and all the vendors, as far as we know, have been paid. And so we're moving forward with notice completion so we can rev up again for next, the next two blocks. So real quick PowerPoint, just because we can, some highlights of Front Street. Three plus blocks of street total reconstruction. Obviously, a big part of it was doing some ADA, some stamped sidewalks and access. And also a big component was the shorter crosswalks for public and family safety across Front Street. The picture on the right, for those that, Mr. Dooley hasn't seen this picture before, that is our old storm drain piping there on the right-hand side. And what was happening was the storm drain piping had wore out, sand was infiltrating into the storm drain system, which caused the road to sink. So we've completely eliminated all the rusted piping and enlarged the system so that the downtown flooding will not occur. And we haven't had any, we've had a couple of big rain events and we have not had any flooding on Front Street, as I guess they would have experienced in years past. We also took the opportunity through the water fund to replace the 50-year-old water piping. We upgraded the size and replaced it with new, new valve collect assemblies, new piping, new hydrants, what have you throughout. And I think we did a real nice thing with the chicanes slowing traffic down our front street and also creating new parking. And as mentioned before, some real nice walkways to enter our park. And then, not to quote one of my commercials, but two more blocks, two more blocks, 2025, we'll give you two more blocks. So that is my presentation regarding Front Street, the conclusion of, like I say, I would like to thank Tidewater Contractors, Client Filter, do the contracting, Northridge Electric, who did the lights, Kielbey Survey, I think it was the four, and then statewide for doing this driving.
Any questions from the council?
No questions, but wow. I, when I first started on this council, I, I never would have thought that we would be here. Eight years ago, or over eight years ago, we had no blocks done. And we were able to knock out four blocks with CDBG grant and then the, the people of Crescent City partnered with us and with Measure S. And now we are knocking it out almost on an annual basis. So we're getting close to, two more blocks.
Twelve blocks.
Thank you, thank you to the people of Crescent City and, well, also our, our federal partners as well and for, for funding this, so.
And yeah, just to add on to that, Councilmember Greenow, I do want to thank the people of Crescent City for their patience. It has taken, you know, there's 11 different funding sources. I believe at this point, we're going to add a few more on in these next two blocks that's taken, like you said, eight years in the making, but this will be, make the third or fourth year of, I guess, fourth year of Front Street under construction, which is not easy for a community, the detours, to go up to the different businesses. So definitely I thank you to the City of Crescent City, everybody that has been patient with the project and, and the detours that are associated with it. The other thing I will say is Director Jaeger did a good job bringing this project in under budget. And so of the total dollars that were allocated, it actually came in under on the street side, like the general fund side of $42,113. So that money will stay in the, it's actually Measure S dollars, that will stay in the Measure S CIP project. And then as we bring these next two blocks to life, that money will be available for future street projects. And then it came in under butter, under budget on the water side of things, 13,725, and on the sewer side, 10,149.
Excellent job. Hard to come in under budget nowadays. Any other discussion from the council? Any public comment? It's like we have a public comment.
Dave, don't walk anywhere and I have a question to ask you in front of this group. Roger Getlin again. You know, we all travel that route, southerly, easterly from Front Street, and then we make the right turn onto 101. Mr. Jaeger, you know how rotten that area is. And it's not all just city. And I'd hope you coordinate this improvement with Caltrans, who also knows about this problem. And they coordinate their side of the crosswalk because it's, it's really bad. They're making a right turn. I feel like I'm going over some kind of a road, a road, I mean, it's a rocky road, getting the right turn around to get onto the 101 southward. So part of that, most of that is city, or I'm thinking it goes right up to the crosswalk, the line there, the line of delineation. And then that is Caltrans. And that's their responsibility to maintain that. So I'm hoping there's, there would be some coordination between Caltrans and the city money in coordinating that so it's a smooth transition from Front Street onto 101 South. Yeah, thank you.
Did you want Director Jaeger to answer something?
The delineation of where the city stops.
Yeah, Mr. Getlin and I have discussed this issue, this area before. What he's referring to is the crosswalk is the demarcation, is the crosswalk's actually in Caltrans right away. So our project is going right up to the edge of our right of way. What he's referring to is the paving stripe, if you're coming out of the bus loading, so to speak, on the south side of Front Street and then heading south on 101. And we're obviously going to fix everything, crosswalk west, what he's referring to is the badass fault through the crosswalk and the right-hand turn lane. And so I think what Mr. Getlin is asking us to do, we can certainly take it under consideration, or maybe Caltrans can generate some budget while we're paving it, but to repair that area. I don't think that Caltrans can give us money. I think that'd be difficult, but they might be able to set up a contract efficient for themselves while we're paving it to go ahead and, and blow that out and, and have that paved as well. So.
This, this might be a, a good public comment item for the Delnart Local Transportation Commission, which meets tomorrow at 3:00 PM. They work closely with council.
Yep.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anything else from the council or the public? If not, I am looking for a motion to authorize the City Manager to sign and file a notice of completion for the Crescent City Front Street Improvements G2I Street Project Contract Number 2023-1002.2.
So moved.
Second. City Clerk, please pull the vote.
Councilmember Dooley.
Yes.
Councilmember Greenow.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wright.
Yes.
Mayor Altman.
Yes, thank you. Number 13 tonight on the agenda is fiscal year 25, Measure S Street and Concrete Maintenance Project Change Order Number One. Well, you'll be hearing a staff report on that.
Thank you, Mayor Altman, members of the council. Another Director Jaeger project, so I'll let you, let him fill you in all the details, but this is our maintenance project for Measure S for this year. Then we also have money for a larger capital improvement project as well. So this is a smaller project, there is funds for a bigger project later in the.
Yes, good and good afternoon, good evening, Mayor Altman and Council. Yes, so this is the first of the planned projects for fiscal year 2425, this being the maintenance one, and then we'll have a capital improvement project to be determined based on remaining budget and what areas we deem, that we have ideas of what streets we're going to tackle, but we'll put together a project and get that out to be here shortly. Excuse me. So we came to council a while back with this project, roughly the idea was to take about some rollover Measure S money. We have basically $100,000 allocated every year to a capital maintenance project through Measure S for streets, the $100,000 from concrete maintenance work, and then also, I think it's $40,000 a year for striping through Measure S. That was intention with this project. That's how we, so we went, selected some areas predominantly on A Street and Second Street, on what we call the Western S curve there, Second Street between A and B. And that was what we targeted for square footage, and then we went randomly went around and I'll show you some slides where we're doing the concrete work. As finances went through, we did have the ability to utilize something called SB1 funding. And that's a state provided transportation dollars that the city gets every year and the money has been growing. We get a little bit every year and it became a fairly large size money we were able to use to do the work. A Street was declared as one of the streets that we can utilize for SB1 funding. And so with pool projects and other shuffling of monies for Measure S, we decided to utilize the SB1 funding for A Street, since that was declared as one of the streets that we could make repairs on using the SB1 funds. So what's before you today, so this project was actually, was planned to go in spring of 2024, do the lateness of the year and the workload of staff and what have you, getting Front Street finished. We didn't make it before the end of the year, so we're out now with this maintenance project, rolling over the two years budgets. And when this was originally taken off, the areas for asphalt, where we just basically went out with an orange paint, painted out the alligator areas, getting back to it a year later, the, and the damages increased. And then the other thing in consideration was that we did actually have additional funding. And so when I run through some of these pictures with you, I'll kind of show you the dilemma we had and why we increased some of the areas. So what's before you today is a change order. We established the contingency for this project through Measure S. And the concept there was for any dollars, we don't use a Measure S funding, we'll remain in Measure S funding. So that's why we use Measure S for contingency. We did shift some of the funding for this project to, like I said, the SB1 funds. And so the contingency was $25,000. We'll look at the numbers here, but we haven't utilized and we don't anticipate utilizing all the contingency funds. So all we're asking for today is a change order to, to be change order to be signed by Mr. Weir, City Manager, but additionally, the additional funding we're looking for is pulling money out of SB1 funds. So. But actually, as far as you're concerned, the only thing you've got to approve is a change order because the SB1 funds have already been signed to, so we're just basically moving from one street to another. So the council's already authorized the city to spend the SB1 funds on street and maintenance projects. So looking at some quick slides here, a lot of these streets is kind of the, where do you stop, where do you, where do you start, where do you stop scenario? You can see on either side, the area there in the middle on the left-hand slide is the area that was ground out. Right in front of it is a, is a gouge line, the pavement or an old seam line, some cracks. The original quantity is planned in spring of 2024 was 3,100 square feet. And we actually wound up on this one little block stretch, adding about 60%, taking that about 5,100 square feet. So this, that increase was being paid for by Measure S. On A Street, and like I say, you'll get the slide on the left, that's before the paving occurred. There's a nice, you know, wrinkle and alligator and, and dash. You know, we can't get everything. Initial quantity was 7,800 square feet. We wound up doing almost 13,500 square feet. And if you were to drive down A Street, you'd say, why didn't they do 25,000 square feet? Well, funding, that's, but so we basically go out there and selectively, you know, follow the best management practices of asphalt, get rid of the, you know, the worst of the worst and try to keep the maintenance of the road going on and we just can't do it all. So like I say, this is example of what we did, but this is also example of why we had to be selective because we just could not do everything. So the area in front on the slide to the left, we didn't get done with the worst area. We dug out and paved back and it's certainly riding nicer than it was. And so this work here was being paid by the SB1 funds. As also part of the A Street work on A Street, near Jackie, there was a siphon or a culver pipe that went from one side of the street to the other that had failed. And so we pulled that out, backfilled the concrete and patched, paved that. So there's a dip that's now out of the road. That's also part of, that was originally part of the SB1 funding. And on this additions project, since we're kind of talking about it, I'll show you, we still, we've begun the concrete works. The asphalt paving has been completed. So that was done, I think in one week. That work was accomplished. The slide in front of you now, all the red and yellow dots, those are all the locations where we're doing the concrete work. So this concrete work that was selected, which was brought to the council prior to awarding this contract, are areas that basically we just can grind to fix. And so these are maintenance areas scattered throughout the town site. The concrete work has begun, they've poured, I think, one or two days of asphalt concrete back and they've done some prep. So for examples, this is B Street work. Obviously, the area by the cones is in, and the, we can't really see it very well on the left, but there's heaving and broken concrete in both those pictures and beyond just grinding effects. So these are areas that we had removed and that's what it looks like now. And so probably about 80% of the concrete work is still, work is still to be done. Some of it's done, demo, some of it's in forms, we're waiting for some better weather. But that's where we're at with this project. I think that's it for those. So before the council this evening is, as mentioned previously, is council to authorize a City Manager to sign the change order with Tidewater Contractors for the SB1 funds, but also the Measure S funds, and I think total contract on that. Should have it here. What the heck is it? I should, I should have ended.
Total change order is in the amount of 52,500.
There you go, thank you, there you go. There you go, $5,591.26.
Council, any questions for Director Jaeger? Questions, any public comment? Thank you, Director Jaeger. Okay, if there's no further discussion from the council, I'm looking for a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve and authorize City Manager to sign Change Order One with Tidewater Contractors Incorporated for the fiscal year 2025, Measure S Streets and Concrete Maintenance Project.
City Clerk, can you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Dooley.
Yes.
Councilmember Greenow.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wright.
Yes.
Mayor Altman.
Yes. Okay, moving along to agenda item 14, Redwood Discovery Center Project, California Jobs First Catalyst Funding Grant Application. And here's staff report.
Right, thank you, Mayor Altman, members of the council. So this has been another project and a grant funding source that we've worked on for quite some time. It had lots of different starts and stops to it as it was, it was a sort of a new funding mechanism from the state. And it was coming out of COVID, really trying to, trying to emphasize economic development. And so the route that they've taken with this was trying to take a regional approach. So they broke the state up into 13 regions. We're on the North Coast region, so we're lumped with Humboldt County, Mendocino, and Lake Counties. And then as they are looking at those regional components, they're now allocating funding to those regions for economic projects, economic development projects that emphasize really it's, it's livable wage jobs is, is what they're really trying to promote. And like I said, there's been a lot of twists in terms of this. I, I think that our first meeting on this was over two years ago at this point. And so the state is trying to create this structure. With our particular region, they've, they have different sectors with sectors that are looking at tourism and looking With our particular region, they've they have different sectors with sectors that are looking at tourism and looking at the blue economy and looking at these different. Phases of economic development. For this first piece, they have allocated fourteen million dollars in what they're calling catalyst funding. And that's fourteen million dollars just for our region. Five million of that is the administration of that of those catalyst funds. And then nine million is going towards these catalyst projects. Catalyst projects are designed to get the projects to where they need to be for implementation, which will be another round of funding. When this first came out, and this is just numbers off the top of my head, I think they they had talked about a total of like five hundred million dollars. And so it got a lot of people to the table as time was going on that those implementation dollars have become less and less. And so now they're looking at a total of about a hundred and fifty million dollars in implementation dollars, and then that'll be statewide. So it's not just for a region, but that's across the state. One of the projects that that we've been working on as a as a city, and there's there are several different projects that that we're aware of. One is like a trail project in which I believe there is a group that submitted for trail projects and building trails. But our project that we've submitted on is one that's been before this council in the past, and that's in regard to the Culture Center and the Redwood Discovery Center. So I have a couple of slides just to walk you through what that project is, and then we can talk a little bit more about the the application itself. The application is under review right now. And so it's broken into several different groups, including a voting block group. And then the voting block will vote for the for the best projects. The voting block is made up of representation of Delmar, Humboldt, Mendoa, and it's in Lake Counties, and it's a it's a large group. It's a little interesting as a lot of the voting block, including myself, Bridget Lacy is my alternate, will have projects. And so the conflict of interest discussion is an important one when it comes to that. But our application itself, California Jobs First Application, it's Culture Center. Culture Center was a big part of Beachfront. It is a big part of Beachfront Park and how it functions. And that was one of the the key elements that was identified by our consultant staff right from the beginning is. Here's your great park master plan, the general development plan, yet you have this this building here that is a great building, but isn't maximized as far as its utilization. But when we look at the Culture Center. Here it is off of Front Street, not very accessible, you know, lots of stairs to get up to it, not very intuitive on how you even get in the building. And then to try to get to the visitor's center, it's it becomes a maze to try to go through and use the elevator. And so part of our our California Clean, Clean California Grant was to try to identify areas that we can make this building more accessible. And so this is what became for the council, currently discussing this overall design with the Tallulah Cultural Committee. But for the most part, this is the basic layout that's funded by the Clean California Grant. And so that would take away the majority of the stairs and so leave you with only about six or seven stairs of the front instead of that last slide that you saw with multiple sets all the way up. And then accessible pathways from Front Street and the new parking that Director Jaeger is working on right now to the building itself. And so that's that's the vision for the Cultural Center, where Clean, where California Jobs First comes in and what this grant application is for, is to take this to the next step. So we have the feasibility study that has been done. We put in roughly about, I want to say it's a hundred and sixty thousand dollars between the city, Redwood Parks Conservancy and State and National Parks, working together. Because the vision for the Discovery Center is to turn this into that destination, that regional national park visitor center. And so you'd have the national and state parks combined with the Chamber of Commerce all in one place. When people come to the Redwood National Park, this is the place they would go. They could then learn about not only the trails that they can learn about from the national and state parks, but also the Chamber of Commerce is there. They can learn about our businesses, learn about our restaurants, learn about the hotels to stay in. So you're taking that person that might only stay here for a day and now that hopefully will stay for multiple days. That's the ultimate vision for the for the project. What this project will do is since we've completed the hundred and sixty thousand dollars worth of feasibility studies and they say, yes, this is feasible. This is basically what the vision looks like. This can happen. What this would do is get it into that shovel ready, so it complete the rest of the environmental documents and then complete the the PS and E, the plan specifications and estimate. So we would be shovel ready for the implementation. So this is what the outside would look like. A lot of these shots have come before the council before, but this is the ultimate vision of it. As you're as you have that new entryway, these are planning kiosks that would be out front here. So if, say, the visitor's center was closed, you would be able to learn all about the trails, the hikes, the restaurants from right out in front and it'd be accessible at any time. As we see the different the different views of this, right off to the side here would be the Tallulah Interpretive Walk, and you can see this redwood node here in the background. That's actually under construction as we speak. So this is the the front of it. Then if you look at the building piece of it and how that comes to life, so this is the existing building as it is right now. Pretty inaccessible as far as just intuitively on how it functions. You look at the you look at what it would look like, though, if we're actually implement this project, you would have something that would look like this. And so again, this is a bigger project, Redwood's Discovery Center. This would be the front of the building. As you go inside, you can have the atrium and the portico share piece of it, that is that covered driveway would be enclosed. And you would have this joint visitor's center, which would have a gift shop area as well as the ranger station. And the the whole building itself would be a lot more conducive to what you would normally see in a in a national park. You know, Discovery Center, a visitor's center where you have all those different components. Culture Center itself is a great building to house something like this, just with its overall aesthetics. This is shot here of one of the the design ideas, which would be to put a mock redwood tree in the center of the building. So when you go in, you're actually bringing those outdoors inside and it's and it feels like like it should when you're walking into Redwood National Park. The overall space layout of the building, you can see gift shop as you would first walk in. So this is that new the new entry plaza. Walking into the building, you would have the gift shop area here as you first walk in, interpretive galleries, possibly an exhibit hall, they're even talking about a theater that you would see. So you could sit down and learn about the Redwood National Park and really get that full experience. Then an accessible deck out the back that would put you right on the Tallulah Interpretive Trail, which is also the California Coast. Upstairs, we would need to build a new set of stairs to make this to make the ingress and egress appropriate. But this would all be accessible offices and meeting space upstairs with our elevator that we have. And then because you have office space that is accessible here, you can have additional office space on this side as well, which would be that upper third third level. It's currently not utilized very efficient. So that in the end is the is what we're talking about for the catalyst funds and and really how it how it could come to fruition to make this project a reality for us. The application was for a total of, I believe, nine hundred and eighty five thousand dollars. And that again completes the design, the environmental. It also it also has a couple of other pieces to it. So right now, what we currently have funded for Beachfront Park is is the trail improvements and a small botanical garden. This project would also design and completely build out this portion of the park, which is currently not funded for design. And then the the other piece that it that it includes is web-based platform to help us better understand the economics of our area. And this is, we've talked to some software companies about this, and so this would be able to generate information on on our customers, where where those customers are based out of. And some of their their shopping habits, basically. That is the that is the application. The application was actually due in January, so we had to submit January fifteenth. We were under the deadline to get some of these costs nailed down with some of our consultants. So we were asking the council to ratify basically the supplemental of this grant application. There are some some funding mechanisms that could provide some of this funding upfront. And so that we would be looking for the catalyst funds to be able to do this, so we're hoping to minimize any cash flow impacts. That's what happened. We actually did receive this. Again, this is extremely competitive. They're they're looking to award. Possibly nine, I believe, applications in our region to the tune of about a million to from five hundred thousand to one point five per application. So we're right in the sweet spot of that, but we're talking Humboldt, Delmar, Mendocino and Lake. There's somewhere around sixty applications, I believe, or a little bit less that were submitted. And again, they're going to fund nine, so that's not out of the question, but it certainly is highly competitive. Bridget Lacy did a great job taking the lead on this, putting this application together, working with our with our partners. They we have letters of support from our funding partners, the State, National Parks, Chamber of Commerce, all supported this project and and are in line with the overall vision.
Thank you, City Manager Weir. Are there any questions from the council? Is there any public comment? So I did have one question. Sorry. The the floor plans look great. I think that's the first time I've seen that, and it looks awesome. So I commend you on your expansion of your PowerPoint. But I did want to know, I didn't really get a gist of where the three. Or four partner areas would be. Is that that counter space as you walk in would be like state parks, chamber of commerce, tribal conservancy and tribal partners?
Yeah, basically, that's the vision is to have the the state and national parks there. So you'd have your ranger that would be there at a at a longer desk as well as someone from the Chamber of Commerce. And so it'd be this joint visitor's center. So if you go to that desk and you want information about one of the trails or about the parks or whatnot, you would have that ranger and they could hopefully answer all your questions and tell you about the the unique history that we have here. And then if your question resolves revolves around something with the chamber, right, you would have that person, they can say, actually, that's a great question for this person, right? And they would be the expert on that side of things. And then also continue to work with our tribal partners so that as you go in, there could be displays that would also have tribal history. And so that is the the other vision of this. And so you'd have portions of that that would also be there and then also signage that would direct them to the Tallulah Interpretive Trail. And they would be able to go along that journey, learn about the the history of the Tallulah people. And and all of those videos from the tribal elders that we have now or will be incorporated along that journey. And then part of that too is to complete. I guess it's sort of like a scavenger hunt was part of that that original grant, where if you go through and you actually visit these different locations as you're going down through and you complete that, then you would come back to the chamber. And you'd be able to receive a pin saying that you completed that journey and you're and all those interpretive notes. So and so that's kind of how it would all work together.
Yes, you have that hands-on public downstairs, and then they would divide the upstairs office space between them as needed.
As, yeah, and that would still have to be developed with agreements between the city council, but the chamber like offices could be up there. Yet their gift shop and retail would be downstairs that would be accessible. And then there would be additional office space for the other partners as needed. Redwood Parks Conservancy, certainly one of them. We could have offices for our tribal partners as well. We've had just limited conversations on that, but if that's something that is desired. Then I think there is available space for that. Denakaw has also been brought up when it comes to potential office space. And so there's opportunities that would have to be further flushed out.
Thank you very much. That was just purely my curiosity.
Yeah, but no, there's lots of, like I say, lots of opportunities, still a lot to be figured out in the long run of this. But then this project, if we did get it, would put us in that shovel ready point to to actually get implementation dollars.
Yeah, it looks great. That's if that's really the design. It's awesome.
I I have one more question.
Okay.
So I saw in the PowerPoint, there's an exhibit section, the large section where we usually have events. Is that still going to be potentially open for events, weddings, get togethers? Or is that going to be completely taken off the table?
So it kind of depends on the implementation, and so this this project could be implemented in two phases. And if I can bring up that the PowerPoint again, I can I can show the go that floor plan. And we can talk about some of those those details because there's there's two phases. One, that's the the portico share piece of it. Let me get to, oops. This is the this would be the new floor plan. And the the portico share, that's that covered space you drive through right now. That's basically located right at the edge of these elevators, kind of this space right here is really what that space is. That's the part you currently drive through. As we take off the front and take off the stairs, we're we're going to be opening this up and there's going to be sort of a passageway. So you'll be able to access the building and you won't have an accessibility issue. You'd be able to go straight from this plaza area straight inside the building. That's what the Clean California Grant is going to fund. It's kind of going to leave us in an in-between stage, to be completely candid, just to set the expectation. What we really want to do is be able to enclose this space, and so that could be an option. The the total build out of this, if we actually build all of this, as you see it here, is somewhere around ten to twelve million. So it's a it's a large project. If we look at it in phases, though, and just try to just enclose this and have this be interior condition space. And we gain about two thousand square feet and you could have your gift shop, you could have a lot of these pieces here. And just have this front piece where people would come in, could be this joint visitor's center, and then they'd have access to the elevator. We don't have to necessarily do anything back here and could still have some events, could still do some of those things. Because still have this exhibit hall. As this was envisioned, it was more, I think, envisioned as you would have a dedicated setup exhibit. And so I'll say, say if as we continue to work with our tribal partners and say, you know, the Tallulah Culture Committee, Tallulah Day in the Nation, Tallulah Nation. Elk Valley wanted to have, say, a Tallulah exhibit, and again, this would be us working with them, and this would really be their setup of it. But this could all be set up and you could have a whole exhibit here, so it wouldn't be very conducive to have like a wedding or something like that in there. But a lot of times what you see in in other buildings that have these type of components is you could still facilitate like an auction or durs or something like that where people are in there in that space, they're walking around. So it can still be used as that community type of space as it's fully built out. But as I see the reality coming in, a twelve million dollar grant trying to get that is going to be a big lift. We actually look at building out this first piece, that's about a million dollars. So can we get that million dollars to build just this piece of it? I think that's a much stronger reality, and then this space would develop later in future years. But until then, I do see this as functioning as a sort of a multifaceted building where this part would be basically, it would be walled off here. So this will be your gift shop exhibit, much larger than the current chambers gift shop, much larger than the Redwood Parks Conservancy, which is across the street. And and having a benefit to both parties.
It's it's an exciting project. I mean, we we unfortunately in past years haven't been able to fully utilize the building. So this is this is a step in the right direction, I think.
And these are, these are preliminary at this point, but it kind of did shape this this grant application for us. So these will be and have been presented to the project partners. We just received the cost estimate. And so this this part will be coming back to the council will finalize this feasibility study that was already been funded.
Any further council discussion? Hey, we're looking for a motion, please. We already did public comment. We're at council discussion.
I'll make the motion to ratify this middle of an application for the California Jobs First Catalyst Grant Program for the Redwood Discovery Center Project.
Second. City Clerk. City Clerk.
Councilmember Dooley.
Yes.
Councilmember Greeno.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wright.
Yes.
And Mayor Altman.
Yes.
Okay, that concludes our agenda items. We have some city council items, starting with reports, concerns, referrals. Does the council have anything to report out?
I do not.
I just had a couple of meetings. I did a little pre-meeting before my solid waste management authority meeting, learned a little bit about the history and the pertinent information. Because I had been an alternate on that board before, but hadn't actually ever sat in the main. On the main board or itself, you know, sat in on a couple of meetings, but. My LAFCO meeting was canceled. I did attend the annual chamber dinner. Where our former mayor in score was recognized with a lifetime achievement award. It was very, very nice. And then I had an RCTA meeting, but nothing. Of note really happened beyond that, so that's it for me.
I I guess. This is the time for discussing placing things on the agenda as well. Do we want to place the invocation? Item on the agenda for discussion?
I believe that we do that under city council directives when at the end of the city manager report. Am I correct, City Attorney Rice? Or can we do it now?
It's sort of on the agenda in two places under this item. It does say, or take action to have staff place a matter of business on a future agenda, so.
Okay, I think on that matter, we Okay, I think on that matter, we just need a consensus.
Do we have consensus?
How does the council feel about?
Your mic's off.
Sorry, I think I'd like to hear a little bit more about it if possible.
Well, do we want to have staff bring back the the resolution from the harbor commission's meeting concerning this issue? And or email that information to us?
If the council would like to hear more about it, wouldn't that be an agenda item?
Would.
Yeah.
I think we have a consensus.
We have consensus then.
Future agenda.
Okay.
Yeah, a consensus.
Yeah. All right. You have redirection, City Manager. City Attorney Rice, you want to say something?
Yeah, I was just thinking for clarification. So on the agenda, I understand you want more information. Do you would you then at that point be deciding whether to bring it back for a to another agenda to decide whether you wanted to actually adopt?
That's usually how it goes.
Okay.
From experience.
It's going to be two two parts.
Oh, yeah. Part one and part two.
At least what I would like to see in this next one would also be who exactly would be giving this invocation? I don't see it being anybody that's on this council necessarily doing it. So who are we bringing out in from the outside? How is that going to be decided? If if my understanding of how things work, we wouldn't necessarily, if somebody, you know, reasonable came and said, hey, I want to give the invocation and I I worry about the process of picking who would be doing this. That's was is my main concern.
Is it going to be a different person every week or?
Or or meeting. Could we even say that it could only be this one person? Would might it have to be? I don't know. I don't know. I I don't know enough about it personally, though.
Definitely invocation training.
I also have an item I'd like to consider for for placement on a future agenda.
Okay, let's hear it.
Okay, this is my first time doing it, so bear with me. I prepared just a very brief statement. I would like to briefly draw attention to the ever growing crime problem across our state, including right here in Crescent City. Recently, I was walking down the street and a squad car stopped me to ask if I had seen someone wielding a knife running down Washington Boulevard. It's incidents like these that support the need for more robust policing. I personally would like to see at least one walking patrol officer added to the beat full time. While I'm new to the community, I've seen enough of the numbers to conclude that it's perfectly possible to look at increasing the efficiency of the pool, which looks like it's taking about twice as much from our budget as is typical free municipal government. It sounds like a great opportunity to pursue innovative sources of increasing revenue from this program without closing it down even for a single day. I think the council should consider bringing on an expert to take a look at fresh ideas to make the pool more profitable with an eye toward diverting that money toward local law enforcement. I've spoken briefly with Chief Griffin, not about the pool, but about, you know, potential improvements broadly. And I know he's not short on ways more money could be put to use. I truly believe this is a win win situation. The pool becomes more profitable and our streets become safer. So that's the item I'd like to move to have on the next agenda.
So. Is that one one agenda item or two?
It's one. Basically, I would just like, I think we should consider bringing in an expert to take a look at the pool, to take a look at, you know, how how it's performing and if there's anything we can do to make it basically more efficient and profitable without closing it. So maybe we could rent it out to entities that we're not currently doing to capitalize more on it or any kind of tweaks just in the interest of efficiency. But I wouldn't want to close it personally. I don't I don't see any reason to do that. I think there are opportunities to save a little money.
Okay, I I know in the past we've had a study done on the pool before. I know that our city manager is privy to that. He can probably give you some of the details on that.
Yes, I've had the I believe the study you're talking about, I've had that sent to me. So but it's it's been a long time and things have changed. So I think, yeah. Any event, that that's what I would like to do is is just move to have this on an agenda for consideration.
Okay. I mean, I'm always game to to talk about where we can find more efficiencies. For sure. I I'm trying to picture that, like, so something more technologically advanced than boilers. Or because we have, we have a plan to put new boilers in there and HVAC or and they're already installed, aren't they?
Those improvements are happening as we speak and we're anticipating open pull back up the the first part of March. With, you know, a fully renovated, not fully renovating, it's still a 1965 facility, but the dehumanification improvements are going to substantially change the environment as well as the new flooring. And so the $1.2 million upgrade to that facility. The study that Councilmember Dooley is is talking about was completed in 2018. There has been a lot of, there has been a lot of changes when it comes to aquatics. The the training has increased, minimum wage has gone up dramatically. And so that has increased the cost of our pool substantially since 2018. We have to combat that is is measured. And so if the council would like, I can bring more detailed report in regard to the outline of what that previous study was had completed within it, you know, the different components of it, how much it was. And so the council will have at least an idea of what it cost seven, eight years ago. And then also we can take a look at some of the numbers of our pool if you want to take a little bit of a deeper dive. And it into the end of the numbers.
Okay.
Not even that late.
And when when it comes to but patrol, I'm not sure how efficient that would be personally. Maybe during certain timeframes. I mean, may maybe we bring it back as an agenda item because I know that we're kind of kind of going off of where where we should be going.
And it sounds like once we.
We can agendize that, discuss it for sure.
Yeah, just just to clarify what I'm talking about. That's just kind of what I have in my head right now. I think that we should be looking at ways to divert more money to law enforcement. And that's something I think would be efficient, but we could have that discussion at the time. But all I'm proposing right now is we bring in an expert to prepare sort of a new new report on the pool and look at ways for potential revenue and efficiency increases.
Sure. I'm I'm all game.
Could we see if we could get a cost on that? Because that's definitely wouldn't be without
I think.
substantial cost.
What Councilmember Dooley is asking for is an agenda item where
where we discuss that.
Where we would discuss whether we would actually do this or not. So we'll bring as much background information as we can at the time.
Fine for me. Okay, it sounds like we have a consensus for direction. Okay, anything else from the council as far as reporting out? City Attorney Rice, any legislative matters?
No, not this evening.
Okay, it's time for our much anticipated city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor Altman. Not a whole lot, just, you know, your staff is busy and we're coming into budget season. And so we do have our a measure S meeting, which is scheduled for February 11th. It'll be at the treatment plant at 5:30. That's where we'll look again at last year's audit. They'll from an oversight board, they'll look at the expenditures and that report will come back to the council. That will close out, that will close out last year. Then we're moving into our actual budget process. And so mid year to complete the rest of this year, we're anticipating that'll come back to the council, hopefully the first meeting in March. And then we'll be having two measure S meetings in March to look at the 2025, 2026 budget. And that's what we're looking at, some of the expenses of the pool, fire, police, as well as some of the street projects. And so that that has us busy as a at a staff level. Some other things that we're anticipating is one, the reopening of the pool in early March. Same with Front Street, Director Agers doing a great job working with the contractor, laying out the new street design itself. So then the walls built, the walls is armored and protected. And now it's time to put back the street, which will also include pedestrian improvements. And so you'll have a class one path on the ocean side. So we're pretty excited about that piece of it. And then there'll be some other components as it connects through on to on to Sixth Street because again, you have, this is one block, seven to eight. We also have to connect it down all the way down to Sixth Street so it flows smoothly and then bring it up to the to the overall lookout. And so that project is coming to fruition on that side. Just full disclosure to the council, the the currently some of our federal funding is, there was an order and then that order was rescinded. So we're watching that closely as far as how those grants come in. I did have a discussion with our EDA representative for the downtown master plan and our and our SEDs, which we have applications in, had conditional awards and she informed us at this point in time, those are still under consideration. And so we don't, those are paused at the federal level. We'll see. That is it.
And council, did you have any questions?
I I have one question.
I like to just make him get up and down.
And do do we know how the pool in Brookings has performed since our closure?
So the attendance numbers are up and I think revenue numbers are slightly up. I don't have the exact numbers on the revenue side of things, but the attendance in December, I want to say was over 900 in December. And the last number I saw in January was over 1,000. And if I extrapolate it out a little bit, I think we're going to go over 1,200 visits. And so that's not individual people, but 1,200 visits in January. And so our typical attendance for the pool is somewhere around 30,000 per year at our pool. So if you run the math on that, it's like 2,800 per month on a year average. So for the middle of of the winter, outdoor pool to have 1,200, that exceeds expectations.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any further questions from the council? Let's see, before I adjourn this meeting, I did want to give a warm welcome to Sean Hyatt to the Planning Commission that was on the consent calendar tonight. I didn't want to adjourn the meeting without saying that. And also just letting the public know that our next S committee meeting at the wastewater treatment plant is on February 11th. And our next planning commission is February 13th at the wastewater treatment plant, both at 5:30. With that, I would like to adjourn to the regular meeting of the city council of the city of Crescent City on Tuesday, February 18th at 6:00 PM. Right here in the board chambers at the Flint Center. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.